G'day Human Ladio sites! This is Ladio's Azubral and welcome back to Pokemon Scorching Scarlet, the official video guide. Here we are in New York City. Last time we took on the gym leader Chloee. Hey there. We're here to investigate a huge robbery and homicide at Luther Corp. Hey kids, is that our city's gyms? City's badge? You beat my cousin the gym leader? How would you like to give me an exclusive interview? Yeah, so we defeated Lois Lane's cousin, Chloee, the gym leader. One of our research staff stupidly got robbed of an important parcel. Alright. Also, there's a guy who's blocking here until you speak to Lois and Clark up in front, so... Uh, you do want to speak to them before you go up into Luther Corp. I've been trying to develop an device that mesracks Pokemon for possible... It's working! Cool. Trying to develop an device that visually reproduces the dreams of Pokemon, but it's not going well. Uh, maybe it'll do better. I'm just trying to move into Unova. We're developing a device for talking with Pokemon, but we haven't had much success. Well, maybe one day you will. Welcome, how may I serve you? Here you can buy all kinds of pokeballs, except you'll notice you can't buy premierballs, and you can't buy safariballs, and you can't buy masterballs. Some things I guess money can't buy, but for everything else, there's a shot. Um, also this guy will sell all kinds of mail. So, you know, mail could potentially be good, I suppose. I'm gonna pick up a Harper mail, just because... Just because. So... Let's head upstairs.
Hello, I'm Daisy and I work for Shield. Wait, you know Coulson?
Huh? Coulson asked for your assistance. Well then, you should probably know what's going on. Someone appears to have stolen an ancient relic from Lionel Luther and killed a security guard in the process. I'm just gonna clear it with the police, and then we can discuss what's going on with them.
Okay, by all means.
Okay, we're good. Please come with me. Alright, sure. Please, go ahead.
I'm Lionel Luther, the head of Luther Corporation. I just got word about you. You defeated Chloee, the local gym leader. Unfortunately, someone has stolen an ancient relic from a faraway land. Little is known about it, but it's supposedly part of a sect who controls some ancient Pokemon.
Hi, I'm Detective Kate Beck at NYPD, homicide.
I'm Rick Castle, NYPD, writer.
Castle, you don't actually work in the 12.
I'm working this case, aren't I?
Castle, we don't have time for this now. Anyway, according to Lainey, the time of death is not too long after the time the artifact was taken, caused by blunt force trauma. And as such, it's very likely that the suspect is male. The artifact was being researched by Luther Corp, thanks to a federal research grant.
This just screams conspiracy. The CIA must have been involved.
CIA has a popular theory with you.
Yes, but law of averages demands I'll eventually be right.
I'd forgotten how helpful your insights can be. Anyway, all evidence points that whoever the suspect is, he seems to have fled toward Fairview.
This has to be part of that great coming threat. We're gonna have to work together to stop it before it's too late. Hydra must be responsible for this.
Wait, Hydra's still around?
Yes, I'm gonna have to find Grant Ward. That's all well and good, but what about the missing artifact?
Anyway, could you do me a favor and stop off in the New View Tunnel? I was hoping you'd deliver a letter to my son Lex there, about this incident.
Sure, deliver a letter to Lex Luther in the New View Tunnel about an incident at Luther Corp. Now, you should know that I am a great person, so I'd never be so cheap as to ask a favor for nothing in return. That's why I'd like you to have this.
With that, we received a Pokenav. That device is a Pokemon navigator, or Pokanav for short. It's an indispensable tool for any trainer on adventure. It has a map of the region. You can check the locations of many places easily. I'm counting on you. Thank you for cooperating with the NYPD. Yours is definitely appreciated. Hydra must be responsible for this. I'm gonna have to find Grant Ward. And with that, we got a free luxury ball. That's kinda nice, I suppose. So... yeah. We have our work cut out for us, don't we? Alright, let's buy some balls. Um, luxury balls, you can buy them anywhere, though. Let's go with, um... I mean, timer balls could come in handy, uh, especially late game. And they're just as... They're just the same price as great balls, so I mean... Nest balls have their use, so I might as well buy some of these. And I'm just gonna buy some good old fashioned... Actually, no, I don't eat any Pokeballs. Let's just call it with that. Alright. So, we don't have cut yet, but now that we've taken care of thing in Luther Corp, we actually are able to head down this way. I mean, we were able to go to Star's Hollow to begin with, but now we can explore it further? Because this is Star's Hollow. There is a guy who's blocking right here. This is Miss Patty's Dance School, that is blocking there until you take care of thing at Luther Corp. So... Uh, you can explore the town, but that's about it. You can't go in there. So this is Sukie's house, which, um... I'm guessing Sukie's here. Well, I've gotta make strawberry shortcake for 200 people, so I think I'm gonna need strawberries. Use the blueberries.
To make what?
Blueberry shortcake.
There isn't such thing.
Hey, the world was flat until someone took a boat trip. You wanna get into the produce guy?
Maybe I should.
Go ahead. Don't tempt me. That's it, I'm leaving. Go and take the tendrils with you.
Fine.
See you tonight. I love you. Aye. Kirk's house. Um... No one's home. Okay. Fair enough. Lorelai's house. Okay. Hold on, I'm looking up aneurysm in our medical dictionary to see if I just had one. Oh, you're that uncomfortable? Cranking Metallica? That's some sort of drug reference. It isn't funny. Um... Okay. Uh, I... Okay. It's a very comfortable bed, and we're just, you know... We're just using Lorelai's bed to heal up our Pokemon and whatnot. Nothing weird about that, I suppose. Mom might like this program. Maybe not. Who really knows? Who really knows? I guess we're not going in there. Okay. Bad Bat's house. Okay. I'm guessing Bad Bat is here. Gnome kicking has a lot about a man's character. More he hates being the first anywhere, he thinks it hurts his street credibility. Charlie Parker was late to everything. Ah. Okay. Sure. Sophie's music. Uh, the door's locked. Black, White &amp; Red Bookstore and Theater. Okay. Hey. Hello, welcome to the Black, White &amp; Red Bookshop and Theater. Okay. You have that theater thing going. I guess there's no movie playing right now. Well... Whatever. I guess it's always good for there to be a bookshop. That's always good. Star's Hollow Beauty Supply is locked. Weston Bakery. Here we go. People can live 100 years without really living for a minute. Okay, I guess. I cannot do this alone. I need my mommy, and I don't care who knows it. Okay. I can scare the stupid out of you, but the lazy runs deep. This was a real waste of my time. However, there were cookies. Okay. Sure. Welcome to the Weston Bakery. Ah. I guess we're not buying anything here, are we? It's a bakery and we're not buying anything. Guess that kinda makes sense. I've been to town's Troubadour for six months now, and I think I've done a pretty good job. There's no room for a second Troubadour in Star's Hollow. This is Star's Hollow, founded in 1779. Anomnia Paratus. Um... Okay. Sure. Dozy's Market. Kim's Antiques. It is locked. Star's Hollow Books. They only got a bookshop. Another bookshop, should I say. Is there a particular book that you're looking for? Uh, Andrew? No, there is not. Hey. This town is like one big outpatient mental institution. Well... There are a lot of books here, I will say. Hmm. Alright, Dozy's Market. Here we can buy some stuff and whatnot. Hey. You a Leo? I hope not, because those guys are screwed this week. Oh, hey. Hey Dean, welcome to Dozy's Market. How can we help you? Alright. So here you can pretty much buy what you can normally buy in Marts. Um... I mean, they sell all of that stuff they normally two people sell, but one person sells it, so... They also have a special item called a figurine. Hold on, and restores a move's PP in battle. This thing is basically a leprechaun berry, but better. It'll basically... If the move runs out of PP, it'll fully restore its PP. It's like a super leprechaun berry, so... Of course, you can't use it. It's exclusively a hold item. Alright, Luke's Diner. Taylor's Old Fashioned Soda Shop. You know what's in Taylor's? Old Fashioned Soda Shop first. Do you like music? If you need music equipment, I can probably help. Hey, if Kirk wants to sit in a box, let him sit in a box! It's times like these that you realize what is truly important in your life. Okay. Luke's Diner is a staple in this town. Most of us eat there on a regular basis. The Dragonfly Inn, though nowhere than Luke's Diner, has also become very important in our community. The co-mingling of the owners of these two establishments can only set the stage for disaster. Um... okay. Uh, I'm not from this town, so... Let's check out Luke's Diner. I don't know about the band pictures. And one of them, the tree is covering my face. Hey bro, welcome to the SH. Sorry, my excitement must be clouding my ability to judge comedic hyperbole. Well, this place seems nice. I guess I'm getting the fancy treatment. If you say so. The stove is going blinky! How many cups have you had this morning? None. Plus... Five, but yours is better. You have a problem. Yes, I do. Welcome to Luke's. What can I get you? So here, um... They also sell coffee and scones like they do at Central Park. So you can go buy them from Lane here. So, they're pretty good items, so I mean... You really can't technically go wrong by getting some coffee. You don't really need the scones, I guess. Whatever. Sometimes you want scone for your coffee, I guess. This is a jumbo coffee morning. I need coffee and an IV. That's a little extreme, I would think, but... Um... But hey... How's Pancake World? But it's locked. Star's Hollow Video. But it's locked. And Antonioli's Restaurant, and it's locked. Okay. Shh! The Secret Bar. And there's a figurine on the ground. Well hey, you know, free figurine. I think there might be an issue with foundation of the building. Uh, that can't be good. Dragonfly Inn. Um... People are particularly stupid today. I can't talk to any of them. Okay. Well then, I guess the hospitality industry is probably not the best, um... Occupation in the world for you, but hey... Whatever. This is Miss Patty's Dance Studio. Well, Dance School. So... Seems the music has changed, hasn't it? This is the gym now, so we're gonna battle, and I'm gonna win! Yup, this is the Star's Hollow Gym. Alright, Student Clara with a shuckle. Alright, it's a shuckle! Alright. Encore. We're locked into bite! We are locked into bite! Give me a flinch. Keep flinching, keep flinching! Flinch again! Flinched! Alright, the encore's over, that's fine. We're gonna bite you again, and you're gonna get wrecked. Get wrecked! Alright, next up's gonna be Yonma. Let's go into Rocky. I'm pretty sure we're in really good shape in this gym, since pretty much our entire team is good. For bug, so let's... Let's rock pro, and that... You're gonna... You have priority. I don't even care, because you're not taking a... You're not taking a rock. I don't care if you're Bug Dragon, you're not taking a rock pro. Alright. And yes, Yonma is Bug Dragon in this game. Well, you should battle the gym leader and be the first challenger. Okay, sure. Why not? Rocky, you can do this, I think. Maybe. Let's go! Welcome to the new Star's Hollow Gym. I'm serving as the leader, clearly. Just so you know, I'm not gonna lose. Now I'm excited. So, here we go, against Leader Kirk! Leading over the Letty bar. Okay, you know what? Let's rock pro. We don't even outspeed. We don't even outspeed, wow. Just wow. Alright, let's still know... Still easily kind of bop that thing. Easily. Alright. Next up's gonna be Butterfree. Hmm. Oh, and a Fluffy. I'd say Rocky can rock, um, can rock pro normally, but in this game Butterfree is not a flying type, it's bug psychic. So... We can just bite it. Flinch! We got the flinch! Alright, a little misleading, but there we go. There we go. You might notice, hey, this battle is easier than the previous gym. Yes, it's not a real gym. As you can probably tell. With that, we defeated Leader Kirk. What? Did I just lose? So then we got $4,000 for winning. Oh, oh well. I wanna give you a badge, but I just don't have one to give you. I can sell you a ring if that would make you feel better. Otherwise, you'll just have to settle for this hidden machine. So with that, we obtained HM01 for Ky. So that's how you get Ky. Oh, would you look at the time? A town meeting is about to start. Good evening, everyone. I would like to start tonight's meeting by discussing whether or not to keep Star's Hollow's new gym, which I myself believe to be very successful, but due to some concerns brought to my attention by certain town members, we will cast a vote to decide if it continues to operate. The gym sucks, Taylor. Kirk has no idea what he's doing, and this whole thing is just draining town resources, and frankly, is making us look bad. Yeah, this gym's so bad, it's as if you took The Hindenbird, combined it with 2016, then made a movie about it, written by, produced by, directed by, and starring Tommy Wiseau. Oh, and got the cast of Mamma Mia to do an encore performance at the credits. And then sent Vladimir Putin out on set for the most awkward moment to ever air on TV since John Travolta at the 2015 Oscars. Come on, let it go! If you ladies are finished, I would like to get back on topic. I think we should seriously consider the benefits of keeping the gym. Sure, Kirk may not have much experience battling, but I believe that with some time, we can make this a great gym. Star's Hollow will be known not only as a historic town, but also to the best gym. Forget it, Taylor. This is stupid. I agree with Luke, Taylor. This is stupid. I vote to end the gym. Yeah, Taylor. End the gym! End the gym! Taylor, I think the people have unanimously spoken. I for one happen to agree with Taylor. Shut up, Kirk. Remember that talk we had not too long ago at my diner? Taylor, I've decided, gym just does not belong in Star's Hollow. Alright, since none of you know a good investment when you see it, Star's Hollow Gym will be shut down effective immediately. Next, we need to discuss the inordinate amount of garden gnomes in Babat's yard. Oy with the poodles already. Well... That is Star's Hollow. Um... Kind of a lot of stuff going on there. Uh, there is a... There is technically a gym there, as you can see. It's not really a gym, we didn't get a badge, but we did get the HM for Ky, which is going to be useful for us, I'm thinking, so... Let's give it to... You know what? I'll give it to Spike. I mean, it's a base 100 power grass move. Um, actually, I don't wanna give it to Spike, because we have moves that are probably not bad. Let's give it to Ky. We don't need foresight. Alright. So we can cut down this here tree. I can do it. We got an X accuracy. I don't know how much I'll really be doomed with that, but hey, I could sell it. Could always sell it. And that could be good. It cannot hurt to just sell our X items, I suppose, since I don't really see myself using them per se. Also, we do have an empty spot in our team. Our team is quite possibly going to change sometime soon. Kind of depends on what I have. Honestly, I think we're lacking... In the water and properly fire department. We do have Ky, which does help for grass, plus we do have electric. Grass is a big thing, it's helping out water. So really, I think we need a water type. Um... So... One thing, alright, we can cut down this tree, which would let us go into the New View Tunnel. Once you go down this tree, it's gone forever. Another thing is that when you cut down this tree, it also gets rid of the tree up here. Cutting down the one up here gets rid of that tree, so it's a, uh... It's a... It... You can cut down whichever tree you want. So we got a max revive. That could be good. Picking up some berries. Getting those two chesto berries here. Oh, the night. Three pineapple berries. Okay. So if this is Pokemon Square, if you remember in Grass Jewel, there were different Pokemon squares for different, um, Pokemon, where you got a freebie here. You don't get any freebies, but you can catch all the starters in here. So... You know, it's... It has its advantages. Basically, anything you can see over here in the overworld, you can pretty much catch. But they're wild. So... Not the highest encounter rate, but, you know, you can find them. So if you want some, uh, typical starters, you can go find them here. Oh, Bulbasaur! Alright, let's headbutt you. Honestly, I really think we need like a, uh, water type or something. So basically, like a Squirtle, Totodile, or Mudkip. Ooh, Torchek! One of the game's mascots. Um, fun fact, the game has three mascots. Originally, it was gonna be Charmander, but since, you know, Charizard is featured in red and fire red, I figured, you know what? The Charmander line already has two games. Let's let Charmander share it with Cinderhill and Torchek. So... So that's Scorching Scarlet for you. Alright, wait... Ooh, Mudkip! Mudkip, okay. I use Mudkip a lot, but I think I need a, uh... I need the water coverage, so... Alright, there's the flinch. Let's... You know what? Did I not buy a netball? I didn't buy a netball, okay. Well, we could always try the nest ball, I guess. Come on, Mudkip. You're breaking out, okay. Goodbye, physical attack. Alright, you know what? You know what? Let's go all luxury on this thing. Mudkip, do you wanna be caught? Come on. Alright, my favorite ball has failed. Water gun! Alright, well, you do have that water coverage. Although you're not doing all that much damage to us, although you are nine levels below us. Alright, I'm just gonna nest ball you. I mean, come on. Of course, you're gonna break out. Well... You know what? I dare you to keep going with that charming stuff. I'm going to Spike now. We're gonna T-Wave you. We are so gonna T-Wave you now. Of course, now you're gonna Swift. Doesn't even hurt. Doesn't even hurt. Now, I could always actually... Now that you're paralyzed, I can always go into, um... Into two, uh, far-fetched and false swipe. I could always do that, I suppose. Alright, lucky netball, go! Come on, Mudkip! Of course, you're gonna break out. You're paralyzed! You are paralyzed! This should not happen! Alright, well, you popped my coffee. Congratulations, you popped my coffee. Alright, Licker, you can false swipe. Ha, you think you can mudslap me? Ha! Take a false swipe. You are at 1 HP. You are paralyzed. 1 HP and paralyzed. A timer ball, I'm pretty sure would tattoo at this point, but I'm going for the luxury ball, just because. Of course, you're gonna break out. You are at 1 HP and paralyzed! You're not being caught. If you weren't my second favorite Pokemon of all time, I probably would, um... I would probably have given up by now. I don't know why I'm using a premier ball. I meant to use a timer ball, but, you know... Yup, premier ball's not working. What is up with this Mudkip? It doesn't wanna be caught! Alright, you know what? Timer ball time. Time for the timer ball. We got you now, Mudkip. There's no way you break out of this ball. No way you break out of this ball. No way. Like I said, no way. So there we go. We got ourselves a Mudkip. Alright, I'm gonna name you... Um... 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 Skip. Skip the Mudkip. Which is what I almost did. Alright. So... I'm probably gonna go heal up before next time, but we do have skip the Mudkip. Um... So... Torrent, so I mean, it's... I mean, it doesn't have a hidden ability or anything, but... Torrent, so I mean, it's, I mean, it doesn't have a, it has a hidden ability or anything, but... Torrent's not bad, especially if you're at low health. Um... So hey, you know, there's that. So we have a Water Type on our team. So I think that slightly balances our team out, we might change some things up as we go on, but that will be next time, I suppose, as we head into the New View Tunnel toward Fairview. So, thank you for watching, as always, like, comment, and subscribe, and I'll see you guys next time as we continue on through the New View Tunnel. Goodbye!